It is Monday, August seventh, the Motown Select Board. We're here meeting at the John Hugle Meeting Room in seventy-nine School Street. So we'll start with the first item on the agenda, and that is general public comments. And may I you here for that?
I am.
If you want to kind of roll forward or step forward and state your name and let us know what's your.
Yeah, I'm Andrew. I.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Andrew.
Again.
Andrew.
Okay.
Bidwell Road, Maggie, Eric, and our son. And we've talked to Martin Cameron a few times over the last few years about a potential reclassification of Bidwell Road. He has suggested, most recently during the storm, or the cold work without a problem with our driveway, that he would recommend, and maybe you all would consider reclassification if we were to commit an investment of bringing in a little bit of fill each year, and it was reclassified from class B to class A, I think, which would mean that you would grade it essentially one time a year if we were to pay for the fill. So you would, we would pay for the fill, we would grade it, and that's that, basically.
All right, so that just going from class four B to class four A is what you're looking.
I think that's what he was suggesting could be a potential option that we all would consider that would, you know, we would invest in driveway and
Sure.
both the town and us. Investing.
Our standard road policy with class four roads is exactly that, well, he, once a year, he tries to get them with, with the greater, the difference between Bs, B has been designated that because they were in such poor shape where there were things going on that he felt not safe enough for the the greater or other equipment. He's going to be in later, so if he, and not that I doubt anything he said, but certainly, I think it's fair if Martin is said that's what he would suggest.
Yeah.
I would certainly go along with that. I think most of the board would probably agree as well. Just as long as we get, and if you guys can sit down and Alaska can sit down with you and kind of put some together what you're going to do, or maybe even walk, walk the property with him, so there's an expecta, so the expectations are met, and he knows exactly what he's getting into, which I'm sure he does if he suggested this.
Yeah, he was actually off a few weeks ago, and we did talk in person on the driveway, so yeah, that sounds great.
All right. Yeah, he's coming in forty-five minutes, half an hour, you're, you're welcome to stay, but you certainly do not have to. But at some point, we'll.
And will he just follow up with the meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, that's wonderful.
You don't de-ject it, be taken a look or driving up by the.
Here's Martin.
Okay, yeah, great.
Hey, Martin, how are you? Ears ringing? So Andrew here, he's from Herrick Road.
That's from my last day, man.
Oh, Joe, that's.
Bidwell.
Bidwell.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get his attention.
That's the name of the road.
Yeah.
So Martin, Andrew's. And he said that you made a suggestion that if he was to bring in some fill, we could reclassify that into an A?
Yes, I think it's looking at it after the flooding, some issues with it's over, had a workup you need to do, but still, we still want to finish up and look at it, and I'm thinking we can get this one lower and then you can play off three versions, we can easily grade that once you're fit.
So yeah, if you want to maybe stop up with, or whatever, just work with him and figure it out where you need it, what to need it and how to go forward and.
It's a very smart road, so I think. You know, just getting shaped up on your.
I think it's, I looked earlier, it's point one-three. Yeah, so about seven hundred feet, probably.
Yeah, yeah, sounds about right.
Yeah, they, they, they talked, and I said that the appropriate thing, they would be to comply for it. Yep, and I'll figure that out and get a reclassified, but you're a pro, and we can just.
All right, Lee says as long as you guys can get an agreement there, and you're good with it, we're, we're good, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Make it official, make a motion that we reclassify Bidwell Road from class four B to class four A.
With appropriate.
Oh, with appropriate fill that that Herricks will take for, and Martin will grade, and and Plough from now on, or not Plough, or not, sorry.
But no, there was inside that again. All right. For the details, I should, I figured that was not so.
Cal, second.
It's just something we're going to put in writing, it's just going to be in the meeting.
It'll be in the meeting notes, and then as far as it being graded, that's in the class four A policy. So once the roads moved up there, it just falls under that.
Well, no, except that he's going to provide material.
Exactly.
So I mean, we're all, well, if he's still there fifteen years from now, it's all new. Martin's in Florida, you're in Arizona. On the big round, man. You know, it's, it's, you know, from two thousand twenty-three.
Again, in the, in the class four policy is we don't bring in dirt or anything, so it's going to be his responsibility. Yep. And to keep, and that's to keep it up to that, it falls below, it falls below A again by getting too treacherous, then it'll
Right.
fall on it, so, all right, I'm going to vote here, though, all in favor of what I? I thank you. Kelly. All right, um, do we have anyone else for open public discussion? Johnny?
Yes, I want to comment about the signage, new signage on the Motown Mountain Road. It's a flashing light, a warning about a low bridge or a covered bridge. The flag and I just saw the road, and I was concerned about the need for that, the visual pollution it provides, the flag and I went to commit all that today. And I'm not sure about the need. In fact, I think it was brought to attention in Motown, I'm not sure how it was done, by Northville. And in fact, there's two towns between here and Northville, including Northville. As a part of Berlin and then Northville as well. And the sign can be placed in a different area. We've been assured that as of time, we'll give a outlet, that the vehicle noticed at that point, but I was wondering why we had to have that sign where it is.
Well, that was brought to us, Martin, was it you?
Yeah. Martin, I've got to show the required sign. That question. Place the sign in that Northville, did deal with that, there's a moment asked for the beacon, and I asked to give better clarity. So they did. I think the logic then is to try to catch the trucks if you were to talk, if they don't go that far. But I knew, I had spoken with the, the, it's in the right way, but a lot of them didn't, they, you know, they were not super happy, like they were, they were fine with this. Like I said, it was good to weather it properly. God, it's something like that.
Yeah, I mean, so we just, it was put up for, obviously, so the trucks don't go through and it damages the bridges on the other side, and common sense is let's catch them earlier than, or sooner than later. You know, you're the first one that's been in here, and how long have they been up? A month?
Month, six weeks.
Six weeks. So I really haven't heard much pushback or any pushback at all at this point.
Is it driving by that bottle you, or can you see it from your home, or?
No, I just drive them by, and drive them by me, and in fact, you know, we're granted becoming more urbanized.
Right.
Or the new signage in San Francisco, there's one more, there's actually two signs. There's one just by the substation, the Grand Rise, and then the second one. And as I say, if Northville's concerned about it, they could put a sign, I understand, catch them before, but you know, if you catch them there, where they're going to go, they're going to have to sell the road, they're going to have to wait.
Well, I think the thought is that they won't turn around, and they'll proceed to the bridge and cause more damage to these historic bridges that we're trying so hard to preserve.
Well, that is, I understand, but we've been, all been here a long time, and we've managed without it. I don't think there's been any recent incident where they had two large trucks in the flood.
Charlie, and not real recent incidents, where substantial damage occurred to those bridges.
It's, it's unbelievable.
That's.
A lot, and not.
Yeah. I don't think I realized that it was going to be a flash of a light all the time. The first time I went by it, I thought my car activated, because I didn't realize. And then I was coming down, and it held the other way, and I saw it was flashing a long time, and went like, you know, could, could it be a sign that's maybe activated by a vehicle? I don't know. Well, that's, well, that was my point, if he was concerned when he drove by. Or was he, so they see it from his house, if he's seeing it blinking from his house, they, I, I don't understand. It's still going to activate when he drives by, when he's going to see it all the time that it's on.
And my concern is about, and in a more visual pollution, and our responsibility as Motown, I understand Northville happy, but as I suggest, it can be placed much further along. There's no other, other place for trucks to escape, once they go past that sign here. So it makes a difference, if they go past it here, they're going to end up in the bridge. There can be a sign, as I say, just before hazard time. Which is, I think, the only place we would escape, that we could go up or west and down, then the idea of this road. It's actually, depending on the side of the vehicle. Can imagine eighteen wheelers going out, or they're coming, meeting their cover on the bridges. Right. Why it's Motown's responsibility, they have it, as I said, it's Berlin is difficult, they didn't, I mean, Thompson maybe gets it well beforehand.
You know, I think maybe we can reach out the idea, or brought it up, maybe of a sign that's activated by.
Well, it's basically the same thing, it's, well, it's not flashing all the time, but you know, they have at least a problem.
Right, and we are, I mean, again, our, you know, neighbor in town has asked us for a favor, and we, we try to work with them, you know, as they let us put sand up in their yard during the last, this past flooding area, so I, you know, I don't want to alienate them over, you know, a flashing sign, but.
I think that's. The beginning. Yeah, I think what's fine is that, well, the silence, my, as I say, you know, we are seeing, as I say, more these are to urbanization, I think, that's very, or.
Yeah.
It was a real, or you call it character, here.
I mean, it's a point, we could just put a standard sign there on our and the Motown side, and let them put the flashing one on their side, I don't know.
So, but we have.
Now, now that we have a complaint, I mean, we can say, well, we have residents complaining.
Yeah, I don't have other people that are part of the family that put those.
Yeah.
I've heard about people as well. Okay.
Martin, do you mind reaching out and seeing what kind of pushback you get from them, and if it would be an issue for them to move that beacon sign?
Oh, we were, there was someone that's got, you know, to put in a beacon, they wanted it the first time, that was obviously going to impact residents, they, you know, visually appealing in their stuff, so we chose the second sign, just for that purpose, that it wasn't going to impact any. But, you know, right.
To, to his point, do they have a sign in the Northville with a beacon on it?
No.
No, there's no sign.
There's no sign.
So we're, we're taking, we're running the beacon.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just reach out on that, if you don't mind, so good, Johnny, well, Martin's going to reach out and see what we can do about that.
Thank you for your attention, this, of course, it has to be there, that's what we do. But we understand. I do have to be said that I have the people. It's good as well. So.
All right, um, who's next? Sir, are you here for?
I'm just here to hear about the familiar, I mean, any class four road discussions, but I did bring snacks, as I usually do.
I was gonna say. Thank you very much.
There's a reason about so, but.
Thank you very much, you're very kind. Shoot, and it comes from, it's still, right?
Yeah, I work in stone, so I'm no stranger to signage, as our roads are related, but I love on Brownsville Road again, there. I do want to get in Martin and the team for all the work they have, who are getting my word passed up, and it's a relief to be able to get out of, so.
Good, well, thank you, and thank you for the snacks.
Thank you. Doing second.
All right, so next up, there's no publics. Let me make sure here, Stefan, you don't have anything or public comment?
No.
All right, so now we have Cheryl Lynn, Cheryl Lynn Brown, coming up with the tax rates, something we're always looking forward to each year. So Cheryl Lynn shared this, this with me on Friday, so I got to take it all weekend long, Cheryl Lynn, very well done, thank you. So if you want to go ahead and, Cheryl, you may.
Do you want me to go over each one?
Yeah, why don't you?
Okay, so the proposed budget is what was voted on in March at town meeting.
And that's one million four hundred fifty-five thousand hundred and three dollars.
And the proposed floor articles are what was voted on, on the floor, as well as the articles that were voted on Australian ballot, like the ten thousand dollars due to the survey fund and all that.
So that's another seventy-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-four.
And the veterans' exemption is something that we have never put into the budget, and the honorees this year said that we should be putting the difference, but because the town has to make up that difference on the extra that we had voted in on probably ten, fifteen years ago, anyway.
Right.
Um, so that would be the town's portion to make up.
And, and just to be clear, so that veterans get a certain percent off their, their tax bill, and that's why that is, and that is forty-seven hundred. And so that is a total of one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars that we have requested to expend this year.
And last year, we ended up technically with a deficit, as you all knew, but after the audit this year, and speaking with them, they said that we should take this the seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven A as a surplus, because that figure is for all years. So rather than throwing in just two thousand twenty-two, we will be taking a surplus for all the years, which that seventeen thousand was sitting in the grand, the, the, excuse me, the general ledger. So that helps us out there. In the, you good with that, Tom?
Yep, not very good.
And the anticipated income is like, the only new one that's on here is the very first one for the municipal treasury of eight thousand, that's never been added in either, and it was recommended by the auditor during the audit to add in that figure, that's an estimated figure that we'll be receiving back from the education from the state of Vermont.
And so there, as you can see, what is there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lines of anticipated income, and that anticipated income is two hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars, leaving us.
Can we back up to that?
Yep.
I just want to point out on the Duxbury fire contract, where it says fourteen thousand versus the seven thousand per month in the previous year. That's because Duxbury did not pay last year's twenty-twenty-two on time, so we actually received those funds in twenty-twenty-three. So it's normally seven thousand, but this year it's going to be fourteen thousand. All right, Tom?
I don't know, you're, you're good. So our request is, as I said, a million five hundred thirty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars. We have our surplus of seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven, our anticipated income of two hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars. So that leaves us with a net request for our taxes of one million two hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. Our grand list this year was two million three hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred thirteen dollars ninety-six cents, giving us a municipal tax rate of fifty-five cents, and that's up four cents from last year. Last year was fifty-one cents. So, and all good. We moved down the paper. We have our residential tax rate, so now this is when we're adding the school rate in. School rate has gone up significantly. It's one ninety-four as opposed to last year's one seventy-seven. So everyone's sitting around this table when we're asked those questions, you know, what happened to our taxes? We don't want to bury the school, but just be clear that the increase is coming from, from the school. So that leaves us a residential tax rate of two forty-nine. And then a, because the school tax rate is figured differently on non-residents. The actual non-resident tax is actually less at two forty-one.
It does also labor at the schools, be increased, or is it just everything?
It has to do with our grand list, our CLA.
As well.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got spending on that end, and then we've got the grand list, common level of appraisal. And that's one reason why, or that is the reason why we're doing a reassessment, this is going on now. And so that'll bring it up, which brings that multiplier down level. So any questions for Cheryl Lynn on this? Concerns? All right, is there motions? We will accept the tax rate as shown.
I will make that motion to set the tax rate at residential tax rate at two point four nine four five, and non-residential at two point four one five six, and the components of that being municipal rate at point five five, and the school tax rate at one point nine four four five, resident and non-resident of one point eight six five six.
And Kelly, any other discussion on the tax rates? So Cheryl Lynn, this is all go out, probably.
Are you coming to help?
You were comfortable.
Yeah, I was gonna say, give us a little, all in favor of what I?
All right.
All right.
I can hand you yours.
No, you don't worry about it. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, and now bringing back the band, we got Cheryl Brown. Cheryl, let's pull up. At least there. So as you've all, if not, you haven't been reading any emails, Cheryl Lynn has stepped, Cheryl Lynn, Cheryl has stepped up to help during this period of flooding and FEMA relief, because it is a very technical time, and Cheryl went through it with Irene, and so her expertise is greatly appreciated. So Cheryl, if you want to go ahead and let us know what is going on so far.
Do you have any questions, first of all?
I'm sure we will.
So what's going to happen with this is we met the threshold. Washington County met the threshold, so on the seventh of July, there was declaration four seven two zero announced, which opened up the Old Town, as long as we have thirty-eight hundred dollars of damage in nineteen forty. Martin's worksheet is indicated that we certainly have that. So what will happen is we will get seventy-five percent of eligible costs reimbursed. We have EFR standards, which are they're called ERAF status, it's taken Vermont, it was in place, I'm sure it still is, which means we have our zoning up to what standards? We have that five criteria set by the state, which will give us another ten percent. And hopefully, the governor does what he did during Irene, and kicks in another five percent from the state. So our bottom line for the town of Motown should be that it's not very, about five percent of the total flood cost for the eligible eligible costs. Would, that would be if the governor kicks in the act by officer. So Cheryl Lynn and I were at a workshop, a virtual meeting on seven thirty-one with the state, and learned a few things. We registered in the portal, so Motown is eligible for to send in our paperwork when FEMA gets around to sending a representative to Motown. Then there will be a kickoff meeting, we'll let Martin know when that is, so he can ask questions, come to the meeting and ask questions. Because with Martin and Ann, our president, that, once the person comes around, that will kick off site visits to your to your sites that have problems, you will need latitude and longitude photos and damage dimensions on all properties for that meeting. Now, which I'm sure you always have, already have pictures, you can hold on Google Earth, and like the latitude, longitude, that's what you look at. And then the damage dimensions. And then we will be scored through a recovery scoring management worksheet, which means simply that projects in under two hundred and fifty thousand will be brought back to the original design by a FEMA representative coming around and escalating the work like they did during Irene, you know, they gave them the money. They give you what they say that they're going to pay for, what that amount is, and that's what we get. And we talked a little bit about lower swing. Sounds like there's some mitigation that may be needed on lower swing. Okay, so Ben Rose, and I have I have his number in here, this is a printout of the worksheet that we did. It's going to be information contact in here. Everything that you need, the information that I'm telling you tonight is all in here, and contact information. For that mitigation, you'll talk to Ben Rose. He's our mitigation, I put his, so put his contact information here. And he is the one who do want to come look at that, you've already had Ann, or you're going to want to have hydraulic tests done on all of your projects to make sure that any culverts that you're putting back in define, you have to finish these projects yet. You want to make sure that the culverts and whatnot that you put back in are hydraulically correct. Ask for our codes and standards, or FEMA will pay for that. So if any of them needs to be mitigated, Ben Rose is your guy, he's the one who, why? We got the money from the old group, those culverts that were small, I had to fight for it, but we got it.
So I think that, in that area over there, Martin, that's what we'll want to do this time for these other culverts, because that's, that's the second time those kind of wiped out, right?
Oh, man, not. Yes, no, I mean, we can say, I was at the end, and we was playing two of the culverts that wiped out in Irene, we played with box culverts that hold up to the market, who, uh, go ahead, obviously, the right approach on any of the beer culverts. So we are already.
Like to that area where I met you guys for lunch that day.
That's already Jared Moore from Stream of All Creation has already said that's a box culvert, it'd be, you know, ninety-five percent sure that's a box culvert. But we have the template to get through the wind.
Right.
So obviously, I've turned now with two four foot culvert, and he did. So obviously, I've turned now with two four foot culvert and um he did uh. Math with that with a cross that I think goes to what this thing put forward. So we're good there for.
Right, but this mitigation, we'll have to do that there for that.
Up there, as is Lover's Lane. Comfortable with work, we can add on to what we have there and make it work. We're rapidly running out of time and you're. What to do with that, and that's gonna need to take. Gonna need so rapid. It's been very frustrating working through this process, the house blow that moved like it's. I've got a booking report when I started to leave everything rough temp. So I can see it rough temp and then two weeks later after this, I get email saying it's okay for the back complete. Disaster condition, very frustrating to get contradicting information, so.
He is getting contradicting information, as I have too. Oh yeah, that has been frustrating.
So I think we have to. On on that, these situations where we're getting this contradicting information, we need to um certainly. Document what you're doing um.
Yeah, yeah, we are the track.
Very close, but if we try to get, and we need to figure out what is the right direction to go here um. Um sensors tell us at this point, we need to start putting this stuff back together um or else it's gonna be a big mess this winter um. Lover's Lane have, did you, were you able to reach out as far as a temp bridge at all to check with them?
For that, I I had a site visit with. Three alterations and Michelle Redd, who's state, has looked at the site and forwarded on to. Her supervisor and stuff, they're aware of it, and just not sure they're gonna move back enough for. What we have, you know, and then we have. Residents wanting different signage and whatnot, for the Lover's Lane, I'm not comfortable. Writing off on whether this road should be closed or not, in residence or somewhere.
And I think that's where some of the conflicting information comes, because. If if the project is gonna be mitigated, it's gonna be over two hundred fifty thousand, right Martin? Okay, so the one, once you hit over two hundred fifty thousand front full. You have to follow FEMA procurement standards through the letter. You have to put it out to bid for this permanent work, you have to get. Engineering, you have to put that out to bid, kinda like we did the bridge.
Great.
You have to put all that out ready, you gotta put the bids out on the Mont work website too, so there's equal opportunity. So that's where the conflicting information is coming from, it's the size of the project. A project in under two hundred fifty thousand, like Martin has done on the other ones. Um he can, they still have to go up the bid, but he can do that by email, you know, send it up to three. Doesn't mean that you have to pick the lowest to highest, you know, they're not gonna go on that, they're gonna go on. Who the board thinks will do the best job, you know, they're two hundred bucks higher or whatever, but you think they'll do a better job, things like that, but. That's where the tough part comes in with Martin, because if it's gonna be over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The procurement um. Has to be followed by the letter, and that's where Ben Rose. Uh I've already called him up three times, and I said, you know, can you start to work and do this, and that's when he explained that. Um well, when they told you to get the road back in shape, then that's okay for some projects. But the other projects, like my experience briefly, what Martin found a bid about. You know, finishing the work. But he's not happy with it, you know, as far as holding and things like that, you know, what Martin's got concerns, and he said, well. Then we'll discuss that some in the. In the workshop, so Martin is absolutely right, there are conflicting information. And that's where it comes from.
So how should we, I mean. Um because I mean, something's gonna be done on this, this is something that needs to be done immediately as far as.
Oh yeah, definitely, that's definitely the end here and there.
Engineering.
Big contractors and a lot of.
And that's not, that's gonna be tough too, because first of all, you've kinda gotta get an estimate. On how much it's gonna be, if it's gonna be over two hundred fifty thousand. You know, you've got, you know, you've got a whole procurement process for those engineers to tell you the exact fact. And that's another thing, when you get that exact fact. Um and you get the mitigation down through Ben Rose, you know, he'll get it approved. If they give you seventy, seven hundred fifty thousand. That's it, they're not gonna give you anymore, if it goes over ten thousand, that's not a real problem. So, and that's all in here, I'm not saying anything to Mike, it's not all in here. Um. So it'll be somebody. Yes, yeah.
A million and a half, and we're gonna be forced to.
Yes, they stress it out too, in that, in that training that we were in, make sure that, yeah, they express it. Don't be afraid to reach out. Ben Rose was, he was helping us break through that bridge. He is, he is glad that I called him many times, he doesn't care, he'll come out. Um but the whole process hasn't started yet, they haven't started coming looking, um the state was.
So Cheryl, can you push that on that end and try to? And keep Martin, obviously, because it's the appointment that he needs, but. Let's aim, I mean, that's our first goal is to get. Him here, so we can have some direction, even whether we should be looking at this temporary bridge or, I mean, we don't know how to. Um expense that in, if you will, even.
They had one down for middlesex town, where the main bridge, the same bridge that we used. Who was they, their bridge, if they still have it. They didn't want it to, if you need to move.
I mean, that's a typically liar, I guess, to make some decisions.
And they put it right on on top of it.
Right on top. Yeah. Well, I actually, I was talking to Chris. Cause I was sculpting, studying, but in any event, uh I asked him about it, and he just thought. He couldn't really get into it, he was buried with all the flood stuff, I was a resilience, but he thought it would be. Very costly to go that to throw that room, to try to do something with, he hasn't been down there in years and years, but. He didn't think he was the final say, I mean, it was. That's what I'm gonna say, that's just one guy.
Right, yeah, we're just looking for a temporary. They may not, at you that, or they may not even have, they may not be. You know, road to their their houses at all.
Yeah, no, I know.
All right, Cheryl, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's right, so we have eighteen months to finish all the projects. Um Ben Rose is another one that if if you need more time. Say, Lover's Lane, then you would ask him for an extension. Um we won't even talk about the appeal process yet, because it doesn't sound like. And anyone from Kena's been around, they even go around with you yet. Which is really frustrating, I'm sure, and really out of. Sequence with what happened during Irene, I mean, those FEMA guys were here. I think it was Stewart that was supporting, those guys, you know, I mean, they were giving us project work orders when we were still in the fire station, you know.
Were always a bump after the fact, and I had. You know, I was sort of defeated by them now, like. Yeah, everybody's hearing the same thing, but we have orders and stuff, but.
You're gonna be fine.
Yeah.
You're really gonna be fine, you've got some good, you've got some, you're gonna have some good people from the state of Vermont. They're in here, you you're gonna have some good guys when they finally get them all on. But it's, but here it's very frustrating because they haven't been around. Um and this. This is a copy of that um digital reading that we went through, it's like an hour and a half, two hours long. But it's got good information, good contact, so we've got a customer on anything. Um they also videotaped it too. I sent you what he's gonna give you now, but it is videotaped, and it's, it's definitely worth watching, it's time consuming, but it's definitely worth it.
Um anything about class four roads or reimbursement?
I talked to Ben Rose on that. Um. There is no um coverage for class four roads. I would not count that out completely. Um we have a lot of pictures, Gary took a lot of pictures, and he was trying to divert the water and fill in the holes so that. You know, people could get out with emergency services, I was still. I'm sure Martin will still take a FEMA people off there, look at that. Um. Because it needs to be put back to the original standards. You know, what it was before the storm. Um. Um and I, I don't think that that should have to come out of your pocket. But I'll work with Ben Rose on that, do mitigation. But the first step would be to have that FEMA guy come up with Martin and have them tell him. That they're not gonna pay for it, and then I will.
Doing your left trade.
I will block her, if that's how you want me to put us, what you want me to do.
Yeah.
I'm tenacious.
No, we know that. But we need to get um the road, the the class four back to their A status or whatever they happen to be um. And some of that can be worked into other projects, we'll say that aloud, but um. So we can make that happen, but. Yeah.
So what what's the first stage for my lover's lane, it's really, it's almost like.
Be trans, be trans, they're true there.
Well, they have an engineer come up with a design for what he does.
That's the first. That's the first step, they shouldn't be able to to talk with Martin and say um. After you get, you you're getting a report from the engineers, I mean, from A N R.
Um not specifically, Karen uh looked at it, but this is going to be. As he told me, that he was awfully looking at it, so.
Okay, can you give me that, are you?
No, they're not doing it currently.
Okay, um. And he, and he was a stream operations over here?
Yeah.
And um I think the next step that you wanna do is get hydraulics down there. Um for the water flow, for the road of the, it must, it must be water.
Uh apparently, no.
Okay, so then then you'll wanna get Ben Rose down there with your. You wanna get Ben Rose down there and. Tell him your concerns, that you think the road needs to be med, you know, it needs to be mitigated, otherwise. We're putting pretty much after that, you know, as far as the way it's going on again, gonna put run your concern and see what he says. And then you can come to the board and. Um ask him how you get a thing. You know, ask him, ask him how you can get a figure for what needs to be done. Uh because he's stressed with that meeting, you know, get your A N R involved. Get your, your um stream operations involved, and then we've got something that we can fight. You know, that something need to mitigate.
Um I mean, I'm just, I can say, like I've done. I've done what I hope I can do with Lover's Lane to the point of A N R, the state. And so it appears to have happened, uh I'm more than happy to meet people there and stuff, but.
Hey, if we can get this Ben Rose guy there, make sure that we're copied, I'd like to be at that meeting. Um and we need to find, uh we're gonna figure out who's in charge and and get some direction um. On how to approach that, we know we need hydraulic studies and engineering, but. Um. We really needed kind of a degree of what are we looking at uh as far as, I mean, we've looked at that. Uh me, me and you look at it and we see us blasting the rock, and we're not engineers um. But we need to have some direction so we can get that, if not this um this fall. You know, what do we do for for the winter, because like you said, you're not driving a truck, we're not allowing a truck to be driven. Up there.
Possibly, but for him, they. Hold up, but still, I again, outside my area of.
He's going fast enough, he'd be all right, right? We don't wanna, do you hear that, Stefan?
I demand hazard pay.
Thing is, as we all know, it's ours, for us, right? It's looking at my timeline, job schedule. Um and for just a temporary fix for something for the winter or whatever, I I don't know how. How can we push ahead to get the state or all the folks that you were just mentioning? But we really have a short window, we got about four months to pull this off, something to make it possible for the winter.
So Ben Rose is also gonna get from Ted Baker, you'll hear that name, he's FEMA Recovery. P A Director. And Baker is amazing, or Baker, and Baker is amazing. Yeah. He's he's the uh road recovery P A Director. Um the first step would be to get in touch with Ben Rose, and then you'll have a bigger idea for Martin, what needs to happen, you know, um.
Yeah, I know, just.
No, you know. Yeah.
Martin, have you tried him yet? All right, and the number is in this packet here. So why don't we make that a priority tomorrow, let me know how you go with it, I'll take his number and I'll try him as well, so that we can both be um. Kind of hunting that down, and then we can, I guess he's the key to getting this kicked off.
There's really two pieces in the product, there will be a temporary fix, the cost of the temporary fix, and then.
Exactly.
Hopefully next year, we should be even made a question as well, I think it's a permit.
And so Cheryl has um. Been doing exactly what she needed to do. Um. Put putting together awesome spreadsheets of all the. Different um expenses. Any expenses that I incurred, you know, for attending meetings or anything like that, it's paid a hundred percent, it's called hunzi labor. Something new this time is um expenses from the fire department. I've seen the bodies, I'm probably gonna flush out culverts and stuff. So Stefan, I think um would keep all of those records. Even the engines, you know, the pumpers and things like that, there's an equipment sheet, and Cheryl has that, he's already figured all of the equipment that we have. Um so you get a certain rate of pay, I think a dump truck's like seventy five bucks an hour, but plus the driver, so.
Stefan, were you able to hear that?
I was, I've uh I've been putting the fire truck in with our our worksheets for the highway department. And which truck it was, so that we can get all that information to to get reimbursed for that as well.
Thank you.
And you, Martin, you still do your sheets, right, you're daily logs, which is awesome, that's gonna save, that's gonna save you. Because it gives the truck, you know, the amount of equipment, Cheryl can better, you know, put that on the spreadsheets and. And the hourly rates and. And the hourly rates include crunch benefits, so. That's good too, you're not just getting the hourly rate, you're getting their benefits, fringe benefits, you know. Move to forget any rooms and insurance to get through here, to know whatever, so that's. Um so if you have any questions, we may have a then, or whoever can. Um and Martin, just so you know, um I'm keeping track of every road individually. So every road, the material, the labor, everything's being done individually, so. So every road, the material, the labor, everything's being done individually, so if you need to. To know they're reaching that threshold for mitigation. I'll come see me and we'll we'll figure it out, but it uh it's all gonna be on, because that will include pay as well.
Yeah, it's everything, you know, that we sure that we're. Getting both to finish.
Yeah.
You know, the two that I kept, first D going over the two fifty is uh the ten. All this lovers line for sure, the ten holder on Ward Brook, giving. Um, required to be put into a lock holder with many other kinds of that lock holder install. Probably not gonna reach that or.
So did um on Ward Brook, um did you replace the cover to what side coverage on there in the end?
One holder has gone back in the same side, the. Two other holders that we installed, the upside, one side and. The big one, that big ones was. Um, a big truck holder that, you know, we had on, so we're getting two four, ready to get people's out that night. So that's gonna eventually come back out and we get.
So we may have um. We may have quite a sound, maybe put like a plate in there that what could be. And let you have hydraulic test. So we wanted to just stay up there and wait and um. Afterwards, and then all of that, but and that'll pass.
Waiting, there's waiting to come in.
Uh, thank you.
Is um for fire, I thought, but they're tying uh the related reverse. Maybe when they drive, try to try to clean out the hell with some stuff.
Or this flood, yes.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, either the truck.
Yeah, the truck, yeah, I don't want them to.
The only thing that's not reimbursable as far as that is gas, because that's included in the use of the truck.
Right. Any um questions for Cheryl or Cheryl on this?
The initial emergency days, we hired contractors, got everything opened up so people could get out then. So. Going on those initial emails saying leave it ten, Ross just passed the road. Um, basically sent them all away. Got the second email saying it's okay to fit it back, the free disaster mission. The pits are all uh materials, so waiting for them to make enough, but. Uh, they didn't are best things to do as much of the work ourselves as possible and in essence being. Having more to charge to. People or is that uh? Did I just get the contractor? I mean, I'm gonna have to hire a truck to do that again, but.
Why don't we we think about that and why don't you decide, I think, all right, what are we gonna be able to do aside from our normal? Stuff that we need to get done prior to winter, um and are we gonna have a time to um? Uh uh do this certain amount of work. And probably there's not a lot out there for contractors right now either, so. But I think it'll be a combination of the two, obviously you're gonna need, like you said, you're gonna need trucks. Um. Nothing goes very smooth, so you you'll you'll need some help. And we'll have to, I think, start with the projects that are uh stuff the more. That we're not, we don't have to to change if we can go back to the original sizes, but. It sounds like we should have a hydraulic test on all those groups um, because you have decided to move up beside anyways. So, I mean, I get that started, once you have a hydraulic test, I think from there you can. Say what is, if you have time or if there's a contractor that can do it.
It's definitely, it's very knowledgeable and. What you can do and what you can't do and what you should be doing. So, and he was actually in Vermont during hiring.
Where's he at?
Um. Midwest.
All right, so I got Tim for bacon, then we have the other guy, please. Okay, all right, so Martin will try to um hunt that guy down and then uh. Find out what we can do and what we can't, but just try to get a. Uh, you know, a line in the sand where we can begin.
You're upset on the bidding process with the projects in one year, because then. If you if you're hiring those guys to finish off. For you, you know, you're gonna be three. More, it's another two thirty, but it does have to be this. Even if it's email, it's fine, it has to be, yeah, it has to be.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it could be the one who did it before, you know. If you get the bids and you put in and you say, well, people are, you know, you need a good job, this is what I feel, you know. Doesn't necessarily have to be the lowest bid, if you did the process and you.
Yeah, it will be, and the verdict stage is that I stayed without.
It was not required, not. Yes, yeah, just going forward now, yeah.
Good, well Cheryl, thank you very much for coming tonight and for your time. Cheryl, thank you, nice to see you Cheryl. All right, Martin, you're up now with the greater. Wanna come on forward?
So, well, so. Yeah. So I've been going back and forth with um. These two, but I think my recommendation will be a uh. Greater. Um. Not the original one forty, um. It's a one fifty that uh the contractor cancellation. Same size machine, it's just a little more horsepower. Um. Comes in at three ninety-four nine hundred. Um, the John Deere was three ninety-two. Um, on the nose. Um. The John Deere, obviously we haven't signed anything paperwork wise, it would be six months from. Today would be best case scenario, that machines would be looking at spring. This cat one fifty is being built. As we speak and should see it by the middle of October, when I was told there, so. Uh, make sure, so um. That's. Gonna be what I recommend unless somebody has any questions or. How I came to that recommendation.
Yeah, any motion? Uh John, was there any questions prior? Um.
Well, since uh we ready to get a bar, sure. Think, uh, John, we're on the greater that we're currently using, it's uh. Acting troublesome with the circle, in fact, we knew there's gonna be an issue, so.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, it's very encouraging, so.
Two thousand dollars, yeah, so there's uh. The cat is a more expensive machine, um we will be in this trade, we will be keeping our. Original crank plow, that's their standard, it's a crank plow, they're come with a John Deere or cats.
Does that include the trade in, all that, or?
Yeah, that's after trade. It's after trade and we keep our original plow, although there's nothing wrong with it, yes. Um, so.
And he threw in the fenders.
Yeah, threw in the fenders. Didn't change the trailer, came and looked at the machine and. That it was in much better shape than we had anticipated, so we threw in uh. In ten thousand, ten thousand dollars worth of fenders on this contract machine that didn't have a port. So I think it's a pretty good deal, I think it will be a. I think we'll see it on the back end, I mean, when we trade it in, I think it'll be. The fullness value better and I'd like the uh. Circle design, they're similar, I mean, they're they have to be great, they're greater, but um. I like the circle design on the cap better than the John Deere, yeah.
Anyone can drive it?
It will be, well, anybody that possibly made, it's going to need noise soon, also the. Yeah, yeah, uh, over fifty, so, yeah, we're gonna buy him an Xbox. Wouldn't be a learn for for me, for everybody, but. I suspect the uh, yeah, we're gonna make one picking up faster than I want, but.
There's so much electronics in that though, can you just go in and turn it on and set it and?
Yeah, so I didn't forget it. Drive it and move it and work and everything, so, yeah.
Owen, did you wanna make a motion on that today?
I made a motion, we uh proceed with the purchase of a cat one fifty greater at a purchase price of three hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Deliverable sometime in October.
Nick, John, any other further discussion other? All in favor, would I?
Alright.
Alright.
Uh, the only other question I had was regarding um. Vacation in sick time, so um it's shaping up that we're not gonna. Possibly, I mean, we're gonna take vacation in sick time, I mean, we we need to, we need to have downtime and stuff, but. Uh, it's quite possible that we're not gonna be able to schedule. I mean, we're August and we all have a fair amount of time, but uh. Definitely don't put us behind, I just wanted to find out if. We want to roll over time, if we have it left, I mean, we'll do our best to get it, so, but.
I I think now we roll over, what, three days, is that similar in the policy? Why don't we see where you guys are? I mean, I don't think anyone's really objects to it, um, but we certainly want you to try to take. Time off, um, so you're refreshed, you know, burnt out doing whatever. Um, but also there's work, you know, it's like we all have work, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll 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 work with you on it, but um, you know, don't try to stack it up, let's try to use it. Yeah. Um, but we'll figure something out.
But one other thing, so the um. Material from the parking lot, we've been um taking the best of that material. Um, to our pit and washing it through our screen, I think that'll be a material that's not, I mean, it's not ideal, it's not great for. Two or three, so I think for class four, if we may be able to. Uh, get some material down when needed.
So good.
With that. Um. But it's gonna take. Make time to make that happen.
Very good, well, thank you, anything else you got? Thank you, guys, for Martin, you guys. Thanks, Martin.
Thank you for all you guys do.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Corey, how are you? You wanna roll on up?
Uh, so I'm here to sort of give some updates on the time call and uh sort of what we've been doing in terms of. Searching for a custodian, some ideas uh that I have to share and options. Uh, and then the only thing I'm really looking for guidance on tonight. Is sort of what to do about the here and now, while we operate without the custodian position being filled. But the all the other stuff to me is just starting a conversation for you guys to think about in the weeks ahead. Um, so I posted the custodial position twice on Frontport Forum, and it's also on the town website, um. I had one person reach out, but we failed to meet on three separate occasions. And then I reached out again, I haven't heard anything back, so that. Um, and this is sort of, has been familiar to me because of uh the library assistant position also being sort of. Short number of hours, it's just a hard thing to find the right person for. Um, so I don't know that, you know, like um paying for a classified ad. I don't know if that's the right next step, because that's money and I'm not sure that we're gonna get the same kind of results or not. So that's what's been done so far. So in trying to think about, well, as we move forward, as we're trying to rejuvenate this building into a community center. Multi-purpose library services, private events, community programming, you know. What's the, what's, what's sort of the the future look like in terms of that building maintenance and facilities management? Um, so I sort of did two exercises, two options to to think about and go over. Um, and the first option is really something that Sasha even brought up right at the beginning of like. And and what has been done in the past, I only give four options. Um.
Thanks.
Which is to just try to hold this job into some other part-time position. And I spoke with Nicole, our library assistant, and she was willing. To fold these responsibilities in to uh and add in about two hours a week, so it'd be eleven hours total for that. For the two positions, I think it makes sense to keep them as separate positions and not. Make the task part of the library system. Um, so if you look at that and increase pay to roughly what the custodian position is advertised at. Nineteen forty-five an hour, so I just do twenty for easy math. Uh, we're looking at about roughly eleven five hundred for the year to manage the space. Maintenance, repair, cleaning and um rental coordination. Along with supporting the library with the current tasks that she does for her nine hours. Um, currently, she gets about eight thousand dollars in a year for her nine-hour week library assistant position. So that's kind of option one in terms of. The investment you can make into the space and making sure it's maintained and managed and rentable. You know, for instance, there was a light pendant light out before we had a private rental. And it was actually custodian Don and his son-in-law came and changed the ball. Um, thank you. Uh. So the other option, which may be bigger picture, longer term, is to just consider a facilities manager. Position for all the town buildings, I know when it first started, there was an effort to sort of take. Stop of all the town buildings and create a maintenance plan and a schedule for it, um. This would obviously be a a larger investment, but it would. Probably be more efficient to have somebody that's in charge of making sure all three buildings get cleaned, am I right, there's only three? Um, I know the town garage was interested in in being cleaned, um. And I was just spacing the hours that I dotted down as a hypothetical at. It's eighty hours a year roughly for the town hall custodial tasks, so we could that text three, it's about two hundred and forty hours per year. But that might create a position that's a little more attractive to somebody. Or maybe there's a property management company and that would be less expensive. I'm not really sure, I I didn't really have time to cost any of it out, I assume it would be more expensive than option one, but in the end, it it just might work better, so. And then I put out some free question marks, because I, those are kind of the two paths I saw for it, but. Interested to hear if there are other ideas or thoughts around, you know, how to get these. These um duties. Completed and performed.
Yeah, just something to mull over for them till the next meeting or something. As well, to think about it.
Yeah, I know, it's it's hiring people, it's hard, I mean, we, any position we have here in town, where we have everyone coming up.
Yeah.
Because you should be having your own town where you have everyone coming up, um. Uh, you know, limited hours, um, and even we pay pretty good, it's still hard to get, um. People so. Do you work in there doing that?
No, she should be.
My girls did that for a few years.
I mean, it's it's more, the custodian is more than just a, you know, someone's cleaning, you know, it's something, it's something just. What you take dealing with the clean, making sure the rental guy personally comes. Is aware of what they have, and then when they're done doing the walkthrough, they let them in and out.
Actually, I did wanna point out the top of this sheet is, I just sharing that time commitment, uh. Uh, example, private rental, um, we just had one happen on the twenty ninth. So you'll see it took approximately twelve hours of work. And right now we're charging a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the non-resident four-hour fee, so. In terms of thinking about these future options and and how they might balance out in the budget, it may be worth. You know, revisiting with these several too.
Are you getting more inquiries into the use of the the building?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting more inquiries into the use of the buildings?
Yes, um, not a ton. Uh, but definitely, and actually, we do have one kind of exciting use, there's a martial arts group that will be hosting weekly classes there. And so, you know, that's. That's gonna be an ongoing use, that's actually one of the here and now questions I have. I'm hoping to get some guidance tonight on sort of the cleaning for that. But, yeah, I would love to hear. Hear any quick thoughts, if these are the right directions to be going, you know, obviously I've spent more time. Researching them, or if there's another option I'm not even thinking about.
If I was gonna men- mention actually, anticipated and come to all of that. We'll we'll actually have more of this year, this just with the martial arts guy, it'll be, you know, it's gonna be, you know, that. It's what we were saying, we had it for three months or four, right?
We did, we're doing a six-month trial with this, and it's going to be paying in two-month increments.
Right, what, you know, what was that, I forget what the amount was?
Um, I would have to look at that, because he's a resident, so that's.
Really, we're just trying to, we don't need to make that. Keep the building in use and keep the cobwebs out of it, um, I think your option one is is probably something that we can. Uh, we we wanna consider in the in the shorter term, um. You know, I just don't think you'll, like you say, you can advertise here to hell and back, and you still not gonna get someone to come in and work two hours a week.
I mean, two assistants ago, it was a year and a half before we had our library assistant position.
Right, and so this kind of actually helps both, you know, there, it's a win-win, it helps. You keeping an assistant, cuz you can pay her um, like keep her more hours and possibly, um. Um, more, more per hour, um, and if you're taking on more responsibilities. Certainly, I think that's more to, um, I don't know. Twenty-dollar an hour is is where it needs to be, but certainly there's a something there that I I believe that we can work with.
And and I'm kind of assuming this would sort of be next year's budget. So that's sort of my last, um, last bit of time that I went to that was just between now and then, like. How should we handle it, because I I didn't, I definitely didn't mind stepping in for this last private event and helping set up the tables and chairs and. And performing some of those duties, but. I don't, and you know, I don't have expertise in facilities management, I can barely keep my own house running, um. So I'm not really. So, uh, yeah, so I'm just not sure that I wanna commit to taking that on until. January, so I'm just not sure if we wanna. Keep renting it out, or, I mean, we do, we we have a cleaning service and they, they have been willing to keep. The regular cleaning. Um, of the space.
But they're not cleaning for this.
And they're not gonna do all that setup.
Right, exactly. And what I do now for the library part of setting and breaking it down and setting it up is recruit, but if you see on here, you know, we have four to six volunteers and. Takes about a half hour, which is three hours of work essentially. To break it down and set it up.
Alright, so if we, uh, we wanted to go that that way, so we're we're talking two extra hours a week, um, roughly, um. And how did you come up with the the twenty dollars an hour?
Um, so, part of it's based on the custodial position being nineteen dollars and forty-five cents. And I'm assuming that that pay rate was set a while ago, or when it was on the. Maybe Sasha can speak to that, I don't know. Uh, when that pay rate was decided, so sort of I was working off of that. Assuming now it's twenty twenty-three. Uh, thinking about livable wage rate somewhere around twenty-three dollars an hour, I think, or twenty-five, um. So.
And what is she making now, sixteen?
She's making seventeen dollars and twelve cents and. And and in talking this through with her, she's not really willing to do the custodial work.
For that.
For that, and that, given that it's already advertised as fire. So again, this is definitely something you can consider, and I can come back in a few meetings. I'm not, you know, I don't feel like you have to make a decision tonight.
I don't know, I I, is there any reason why we should? Push it off? I don't think we're gonna find anyone any different, I mean, I think we're gonna come around to the same thing.
Think we have somebody that might be willing to do it, um. But you, you know more about the budget.
I think there is still separate town hall. Part of the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't really know what's in there for any of this, but that certainly. Is in the budget now, so.
Now, as far as the setup, you got something that she can handle, like.
Recruit some volunteers to put the library stuff away. But then she could be responsible, like this last event, they needed fifty chairs and. And so we added that in.
Okay, and she could probably coordinate the volunteers and manage the level or something, that would be good for her.
Yeah, we have five hundred dollars in here. And then we have two thousand for building maybe.
Yeah, and um, what Sasha shared with me is that it's been about eighty hours a year at nineteen forty-five, so that's actually more than.
So she's at seventeen twelve now, um, taking on these extra responsibilities, um. But doing again what she has been doing for the seventeen twelve, do you think she, uh, was there one thing about, um, nineteen, um. Uh, what I was. About nineteen eighty per hour?
I mean, I'll have to ask her if she's willing to do that or not.
What was her?
She's at seventeen twelve.
I was using twenty as an exercise, like a, a, you know, exercise in numbers. Based on the current advertised rate for the custodian. Plus adding in, you know, fifty-five cents an hour for the fact that it's twenty twenty-three, not. Whenever that pay rate was established.
Or you wanna say just, I mean, twenty, I mean, twenty seven, they're gonna make a difference, I guess, I would just figure it on some of the other numbers we have.
I mean, we're, well, I'm talking four months.
Then we can revudge it for. This year.
So it's not gonna do that much.
Alright, so, we can do that, um, for twenty. That makes uh sense with your. The eleven hours a week.
Okay.
I think that's a. Fair for, for everyone.
Um, and then just quickly on this cleaning question for ongoing rental, right now we have the library clean box and shop, and that comes out of the library budget. Um, but when there's private events, then it falls to the cleaning and comes out of the town hall budget. Um, so for this weekly martial arts class, I wasn't really feeling like we needed to have it cleaned weekly after each. Session, but I do think the, that it probably needs to be cleaned more than once a month for states. So just looking to see if we can add in one more cleaning, so it's twice a month. To come out of the town hall budget. That's unreasonable.
How many times have they gone, four times, four times a week? I have four times a month, pardon me. That's probably, I, that's probably fine, I mean, there's gonna be, how many people will participate in it?
We, they've just started advertising, it starts the twenty-third of August, and I think you said there are about twenty people that were interested. And actually signed up for that.
There's a kid, kids class. Then the kids and parents together, and then the adult class. And eventually it's gonna give us all a free class.
I actually was gonna suggest maybe done, just so the board has a really good handle on this, and you could join the class. Explain us now how it goes, see if it needs cleaning out.
Quite a lot of older people. Do these classes, but they really help them get, you know, coordinated and really in good shape.
Okay, well, that's, that was really it, so if we have to go ahead and just implement option one, then. December, and then we can rework budgets.
Need a motion for this, or we?
Yeah, uh, we can, I'll I'll move to accept the, um. Corey's recommendation of uh, option one for a custodian manager, um. Uh, with the existing part, part-time library staff, um, will move hours up to eleven hours per week at. Twenty dollars per hour. Any further discussion on that? And then seeing, uh, all in favor of what I?
I I don't. Actually, I should, the discussion, but what if she doesn't wanna do?
Then we'll start over.
I worked this through with her, yes, she has said she's willing at this pay rate, so.
That's a good sign.
Yeah.
Dawn, do you have anything else on that?
Uh, no, no, I mean, if you wanna wait till we get further, right?
Oh, yeah, we got Clark, we got the uh, about the truth. Very good, thank you, uh, Corey. Alright, thanks again, um, Clarky, sorry, we're a little behind schedule, but, uh. Yeah, very, very good.
They're puppy and cheese.
They're what? I just had, I mean, him, so. Ray, there's a, I'll give you the verbal overview. Uh, you've seen the the map before, so it's nothing new there, um, so. There will be a couple of. At least probably a couple of motions I'll be asking for tonight, um, one is. Revolving test pits, um, and the other one is, uh. That should be in motion, but, um, I have a new wrinkle to present in terms of a test pit, um. That affects the town directly, um, but I wanted to start off by letting you know that the. Long awaited for engineering services agreement that was in process way too long was accepted about. Um, seven weeks, like eight weeks ago, so that's been in place for a while. Um, the immediate. Um, effect of that is that the reimbursement is possible now, though we haven't received. Any bill for services yet, um, so. That's not a moot point, but it's a, it's a, it's a good point. The grant writing, this, go back to the three point three. Uh, million dollars that Moretown College did before. For a grant for this project, um, is someone on hold, um, Emily Packett, who's the grant writer. Um, is basically just waiting to test it, and so that leads me to the next o- update, uh, from you. A full quarter about it. And that's the update even in terms of, um, where stakes have been put in to, um. To note where we're going to be digging test pits on a couple of pieces of property. Uh, one on Twenty Farm Road, uh, Christian Corey Stevenson property. Uh, and also up here behind the school here, and if you wanna take a look at the map, uh, that's the second piece down there and just. Grant you about what you're looking at here, uh, just so you'll know kind of the test pit, so if you'll hold it so that the. The, um, the white border is at the bottom, um. And I'll sort of start from the top, um, where it says Route one hundred B, you can see that where we're kind of going, so the map goes to the top. Where the X is, that's the, um, Upper Valley Services property that was seen as a possibility. Uh, for a site, uh, that was walked by Audit Creek and, uh, three members of the committee, Ray. Um, Dave Westernman and myself, um, a few weeks ago, and it was pretty obvious after we got through that property, walked from Common. Road down to, uh, one hundred, uh, down to Dickerson Road, but that really wasn't gonna be worked out, and the soils didn't look like they were gonna be. Enough of them, plus the slopes were fairly significant there, um, sort of, it was a good exercise for us to do, but. Um, it turned out that that wasn't gonna be viable. Uh, if you just go a little bit further down, uh, to the, where the other X is, that's the Cutler property, that's the conjunction of Common Road and. Moretown Mountain Road, and the X is in this case, uh, signified that those are properties that we're not gonna be considering now for test pits. Um, I'm gonna, the question mark, which is over there on the, um, um, to the left of where the Upper Valley Services is, I'm gonna be getting to that in a second. Um, the, the other, um. What the, in the site, um, the furthest down on the, on the left there, um, the, the. This, um, where the circle is, um, that is where the school. Um, system is, at this point, stakes have been added there. Uh, and the other circle that's over to the left is the Stevenson property, Alponi Farm Road, so those are the two sites that will be. Uh, doing test pits and for sure, that's, um, we have, um, decided to pursue those two spots. Um the, then I I do wanna talk a little bit about how we're gonna get the test pits dug. Uh but I wanna update you on the sites first and then and then we'll go to that. Um so I'll start with the question mark that's up there, um next Upper Valley Services, that's the Bozak Meadow that's off. Murphy Road and borders the river, um when you cross the. The bridge when you leave the village going north, uh that's the metal that you see and they and they've been running um few cows on there. Uh fattening them up in the summer for the last, oh, probably eight or nine years or so. Um and the soils there have always come up on the soils map as being a possibility. So when the uh committee and Otter Creek was uh taking a look at the sites um a few weeks ago. Um I wasn't there, but Ray, David Westernman and and Robert Clark and the hydrologist from Otter Creek went over and. Sort of stood along the edge of the meadow there on on Murphy Road and kind of looked over and kind of took a look at, because if you. That meadow has two tiers, the one that's next to the the forested area is the higher tier and that it, there's a. So then there's another tier that goes down before it gets to the river. Um and it turns out that um those, there are some building sites in there that the Bozaks have uh established, and they're actually having test pits dug. Uh for that area, so there's already data that's available there. Um and we discovered this after the the meeting when David went over and talked with Bill and Mary about. Um you know, just like reminding them about what the committee is doing. And wondering whether or not this is something that, you know, they might be interested in pursuing. Um their initial reaction was not. Um you know, they weren't interested, they felt that these are residential sites that they um. Were planning on selling at some point, um and having the test fit data available, you know, obviously. Uh that was available for them to start that process whenever they wanted. Um one of the um. Things that came up in that discussion was the my possible sales price, and they felt like what they would be asking. Might be, you know, significantly more than might be, might, we might be able to bear with the project.
Mm hmm.
Um but in in fact, it may not be. So um another discussion with them may be forthcoming, and we need to. Have another meeting with Otter Creek to see whether or not, because they're gonna take a look if they can pull the test fit data and see whether or not it's, you know, it seems. Viable to continue that that conversation and kind of take that down that road until there's either an in- an interest or or not. Um from them. Um so moving on, if you'll, the other circle that's there uh is sort of in the lower right-hand corner of the property. And um that's off South Hill, and for those of you that may be familiar with this, that is town property. That's part of the town forest. Um I was initially not very optimistic about that. And frankly, mostly it was because I wasn't very familiar with the with where that borders on South Hill. But Ray and David Westernman and and Robert and hydrologist went up there and took a look, and in fact, the the slopes and the soils up there might be pretty good. So this raises a significant question um and dilemma, because um. If the town is willing to have test pits dug up there to ask to obtain whether or not the soils are adequate. Um there's lots of issues here, there's the town forest plan, there's a distance from the village.
That seems considerable, just um the village.
In discussions with Otter Creek and with Emily Packet with the state, um. A couple of things have come up that we were not aware of were possible from an engineering perspective. Um it's actually possible to. Um and I I may not be using the right term, and Ray, you know, jump in here if if I'm overstating this or getting the right wording. Is that it's actually possible to create a um to to put piping up there. Without excavating a from here in the village all the way up there through the forest, you can actually go underground. With a drilling mechanism that would be able to run pipe that far from the village up to that site. And the pipe would only, wouldn't even, would barely need to be a foot underneath ground, because. Anything that's pumped up there would drain back after it was pumped, so there's no need to be below a frost line or anything like that. So w- we have, and that's one of the discussions we need to have with Otter Creek in terms of its viability. In terms of, because it could be proposed as a solution and and an engineering solution could come up, you know, and and um. Estimates done for the cost. However, um you know, it is um currently, and I don't know, Chris, actually, I'm glad they're here, because. Um you know, you've been intimately involved with this project in terms of the town, the the forest, but you may wanna come up here for this.
John, that's dude.
Okay, um and um, that's right, that's right, um. So, and that's right, so anyway, so it's, you know, I don't wanna say that this is, I don't wanna overstate this, that um that it's. Um but you know, what kind of disturbance there would be. Uh in terms of the actual construction and the and what we would be looking at at on site. Um up on the top of next to South Hill. Um but it 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 sounds like it's it's a um that if the soils are. Reasonable up there and extensive enough that it might be an option worth pursuing. But in order to do that, that we we would need permission, you know, the select board need a grant permission to to do the test pits up there. Um now, that may or may not be enough information at this point to make a decision. Um and I don't know enough about the the forest plan that's been going on. And whether if it's it is extensive for this entire lot or a portion of it, so. I wanted that, but it it's a, but it seems like a viable project, and Ray, I don't know, is there anything else that you would add to that, other than what I mentioned about that site?
No, I think you've got it, uh I think you hit it pretty well, Clark. Yeah, it's pretty well covered, boring up the hill is a distinct possibility. Um. As far as permanent disturbance, I don't anticipate a lot, but during construction, there would be some disturbance. Once it's done, it's done, it it's over, then it's just a maintenance thing after that.
Um so that's one of the, you know, obviously a lot of new information for not only select work, but for the folks that have been working really hard on the forest plan. I and I know a bit about this, just I know that um uh John Snelter has been involved and, you know, has come up here. Any commission meetings as well, so um. That is um and if we're able to um. Depending on what we find out when we get information from the test pits and and Doug um at the Bozak property. Whether or not the town is willing to do uh some test pits up on South Hill, these are, you know, relatively significant uh. Developments that that we were not aware of. So um between Ray and I, um we can try to answer any questions about. The test pit locations at this point, and you know, we're happy to take feedback or information regarding the. Property that the town owns.
What was this about right there?
Um. Oh, that other part, that other, that's um um Dave and Elga's property that was considered in one night, so yeah, I should have crossed that out, sorry, that's that. That stray little dot there, yeah, that's not a consideration, one thing, fine.
So. Where was the test pit here, yeah, like where on the property?
Well, no, I mean, where the button or where the that is, John, is that would probably be more a a little uh bit further south on South Hill. Um and yeah, so that, and that's the sort of thing that, um I mean, and actually, Ray, you were um. Is the the town property that's up off south is border South Hill, is all of that relatively in the same slope? Or is it varied in that area? It's pretty much.
It. Yeah, it's pretty level, it's, you know, a sloping toward South Hill. Um once you get in there ways, obviously, you're you're coming down the mountain at some point, but we're not gonna go that far, the the uh. Leach, the disposal field to be on the level or part of the property up there. It's gonna be approximately uh, um you know, the where we looked at fits was approximately. Oh, three hundred yards off the road.
Yeah.
So right now we have scheduled um Stevenson's and then the school property, correct?
Yeah.
Um I think we should probably go ahead and do the the town property up there. Um while we're doing it, just because I mean, does it make sense to come back in six months after we decide that, hey, that's a good idea?
What is it, four hours directly, so two hundred dollars or whatever it was?
Right.
Yeah, so it, you know, I think it's also, but regardless of what happens in the long term for this project, I mean, we, I think we've talked about this entire time. It's it's information that, you know, this is data that we don't have now. And whether it's, you know, a private property owner or a town property, well, this is information that we'll have that may or may not be useful in the future, but at least we'll have it. You know, and possibly, you know.
Yes.
At some point. Uh, yes.
Go ahead. As far as the Bozak property, so you already have test pit data, so technically you need to dig more pits? We don't have a larger scale or you?
Yeah, it depends on what the data is showing.
Okay.
Yeah, it um it it may be that there's enough information there, because and it could be that. Um they didn't go deep enough, they need to go a little further down and get some more horizons there.
But yeah, they're obviously talking about a residential.
Right, right, exactly, okay. Yeah, okay, that's good. Uh you know, one of the other dilemmas there is like how to get across the river. That came up a couple of times, there's various solutions, some some are, you know, newer. Esthetically attractive than others, uh in practical safety ways, safer than others. Um but anyway. Um yeah, so with the, so that would be, if if we can dig those test pits on uh on town property, then we'll. We can get Otter Creek back here to go up there and put those stakes in.
And as far as using um Coolin, I think that's probably a better option than than our.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, does that, that um, I mean, Ray checked in with them, was it, I think, was it last week or the week before you asked him, Ray?
Uh we talked last week and for the mini is fifty an hour, uh I think that's a, that's a great deal for us.
Okay.
Dollars an hour, and uh there'll be a little extra moving it, but uh. They're they're really uh friendly people and they'll be, they'll treat us right, I'm sure of that.
Okay, uh I'm just gonna go, I've already asked the state whether or not we'd get reimbursed for that, I'm pretty sure, I don't see why we wouldn't, but I, you know. I'll confirm that and make sure that even, you know, that that's something that that would happen. Um and yeah, so those are um. Yeah, I mean, the the test pits, I'm checking in about um using Coolin, Ray, do you know how long, how much longer is they gonna be working on the on the project here?
They'll be uh in the park lot till the end of next week, and then they'll start the the actual gravel wetland area. After that, so they'll be here the rest of the month for sure.
Most of the month.
It's gonna go, it's gonna go probably. Second week in September.
Oh, okay, right, so we got a little bit more of a window there, okay, that I was a little. Okay, great, um so the last thing I wanted to do is um. And Chris and I have been talking about this, and you talked about this when we went to the um and put the stakes on the property. Um is that there's a landlord um permission form that needs to be signed off on, so it's, and I'll need the town to do that for the. Test pits and I'll bring that in, probably at the end of the week, I'll be down tomorrow and probably Thursday, but. Um and. And Chris, you had some concerns about that, and I wasn't able to um. To review the document adequately enough to make, to be able to um give it a proper summary, so. If you'd be willing to just kind of share your concerns about that, and we'll just.
Okay, um. Yeah, so like Cory and I have been looking more directly at Clark on it. Uh the letter is included in the handout. That part's put out, um they're they're putting it in the package.
Gets the last, and I.
This.
From our perspective, Cory and I, and you've been willing to participate with this town project, this isn't like our goal, am I? Something leach field, so um I just, I wanted to say that, so when I saw a piece of paper where I really should get a lawyer involved. I I got nervous, right, I don't, I wasn't gonna use a lawyer to help me guide out, but maybe I could. Because ultimately, the second or the the, you know, the threat that's to by this authorization gets under the last sentence, and then everyone has the obligation to identify. All underground utilities and structures and the location of the site. Failure to identify, we need to represent an eligibility, um. I mean, those are such big trigger words, it basically says that Cory and I are on the hook for that going wrong, and all of a sudden now I definitely want a lawyer. Um but I mostly was just rewording that, because there's a lot of, you know, really, I think I'm working with a town, not a consulting firm. Um and I I think really we just wanna make sure that I can, we can disclose what we know about the property, but other than the deed that we purchased. I have no idea what, you know. I I get hearsay and things, but you know, I have no reason to suppose anything else is going on there, but I can't be held liable to information that. I I don't even know, right, so that was where it began for me. Um and then I started redlining it to say I wanted to make sure I got a copy of the task, because I was told to get that, I wanted to make sure that. If it's not stepping and digging, and I would know who it is, and I would need all the data, and you know, I would, I I redlined stuff that basically said I want some basic. Relationship through the project. Um so I think really where you brought it back, though, is the point that I don't need a contract with Otter Creek necessarily. Um the town and and I agree for of working together, and then I, my relationship. As I assume every other guy on that big business with the town. And my liability is whether or not the town. Is does something right or wrong. Yeah, and that's, again, I haven't seen, sought counsel on this, and uh you know, I'm not sure it's worth doing that for us. Uh so I'll just stop talking.
Yeah, so the, and I don't know whether this is, you know, I guess it's a wrinkle, I'm not quite sure. Um where what to do with it, but um you know, originally, we we're pretty sure that's town, they're gonna be doing the excavating. And uh now, you know, it looks like we probably will be looking at an outside firm, so I um I suspect um. That we probably ought to check with Coolin as well, Ray, about, you know, whether or not they need a document signed and what it might look like for them. Does that make sense?
So, so Pullen would have to. Call in their own DigSafe and get their name on the ticket directly. Uh as far as utility location, um as far as anything else, I don't think, you know, other than. I don't think we need anything signed from them, or they need uh that we already have, and they're already insured with the town for them. You know, they're already have have proof of insurance, so we're covered on that, no matter what they do in the town, so as far as I know. Um. And they just have to do their own DigSafe, so we need, you know, three or four days notice for them to to do that.
So just remind me with DigSafe, um. Um I thought that with DigSafe, they would, they only surveyed within the right of way. Or if they contract with someone, will will they basically survey wherever you want them to go? Is that the case?
Yeah, I use a kind of a general term with DigSafe, because there there are other underground locators as well, um. That go out, go outside the right of way, and DigSafe, they're. I, you know, it's kind of funny where their borders are, most of the time it's within the right of way, but uh uh sometimes it's up to. Um like on a power line, up to where the cable comes down.
Okay.
So uh or up through the meter or however where you wanna put that.
Can you, can you check with Dix, I mean, can you check with Coolin and see, you know, how they'd like to proceed, pers- uh proceed with that, Ray? And then.
I can certainly, yeah.
Okay.
I can certainly, I can certainly do that.
Okay, tomorrow. Cause we might be able to kind of figure out, like, what are those stakes are, Chris, you know, where things would cross, and we could just, you know, and DigSafe that that way.
Yeah.
Right, and I, but and I mean, back to. Chris's little question on the on the the document, I mean, um I mean, we can even eliminate. This the sentence failure to identify these reliefs that represent any liability, I mean, I think those are the thing that's reached a concern with most right there, right?
Yeah, that's a reread my redline, but yeah, I mean, I certainly won't be held liable to information I might not even.
Right, you don't know, so as long as. Um you know, we, there you, if everyone's doing the best of their ability, um with DigSafe, we're using DigSafe. You let us know what you know, you know. You let us know what you know, you know, if something, if they break something, it's it's our responsibility, you know, we're. Um, so I'm not gonna say, well, Kristen will tell us that, so we can break it.
Yeah.
Um, but I think working with, with those guys or Ray is, and Coolin, DigSafe. Um, and then the board would be willing to to work to make sure that you're not held liable for something you're not aware of.
So would I even need to sign a document as a consulting firm?
Well, that's what I, that's what I, oh, yeah, that's a really good question, that's exactly what I'm saying, but I mean. Right, it may not even necessary at this point, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's pretty much, yeah, a standard.
Right, yeah, if their truck broke and spilled oil on that field, I mean, I. I'd also want it to get cleaned up.
Yeah.
Reliability really is on the town, if the project is wrong and I to land on it would be supported and cleaned up. But for me to get really articulate with the language, I've rarely got no language, honestly.
Yeah. Let me, um, I'll come up with a, with a revised. Uh, yeah, looking.
Needed, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, and I'll check it, I'll send it by you.
Alright.
Um, so, you know, again, Engineering Services was accepted, Grant Writing is grading the data from TechPits. Um, we're hopefully gonna be setting up the dates, um, it's up to Otter Creek to set up the dates, because they have to work with the state and have a couple of people from there. Archaeology has to come through, we clear the sites as well, which would have to happen up on the hill as well, and, um, and. Yeah, and. Well, no, oh, yeah, thanks, um, so Ray Dingle, the Facilities Manager for the District is gonna come and take a look at it, follow me on Wednesday, um. I, I'm, I, I, I'm sort of prepared in some respects not to get, to get a little pushback at that point, because. With the site that's up there, it has to be, there has to be an alternative site that's, that's identified with this put in. So if you, if you want it, it doesn't really make sense to dig in it in their alternative site, because at some point that may not be used.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we, and we didn't, we don't know where that is, uh, because we, we don't have that, that, the drawings or, uh. We, we actually have some drawings, but nothing that that detailed. So Ray's gonna have to take a look and, and, um, on the, he's, he's actually gonna indicate on the, on the stakes that are up there, whether or not it's in the, um. In the, in the.
Accessory place.
In there, in there, stairs up in there, back, I say.
Right, where it's, if it's in their back site, yeah, so.
There's no road to.
We don't, we don't know that.
Right, we'll have to. Did we, did we consider, uh, fields down there?
Yeah, so the other thing that, you know, with Vic's question, because this, in Warren, um, their facility underneath the soccer, you know, their rec fields up in the school.
Hmm.
Um, however, they're on top of a lot. With that, with sand.
And we're on clay.
And we're on clay, and so, but, uh, so I said, yeah, why can't you just like. Thirty, build it up like thirty feet, put it, but it's, um, now, I'm gonna paraphrase the hydrologist, but. You could put a hundred feet out there, but where that, where that ends and where that next horizon. Starts, if it's closer than eight inches. It doesn't matter, if it's a foot, you could put it in there, but if it's only, if you're, ba- basically, if this is clay, you could put a hundred feet there, but once you get, but if it gets to that point. It's gonna start to spread out, it has to have some other material, it would have been over the top of that clay, clay in a naturally occurring fashion.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, you know, it, you know, does it make practical sense to most of us? Probably not, I understand it from a, from a engineering perspective, but it is frustrating from. Other perspective, because, yeah, it would be, you know, having an elevated playing field with some fancy fencing up there to so kids. Fall off the edge of the, quite the kind of need, but, um, I think it's gonna happen, so that's not a liable sight, I have your mind. As far as the rest of the town property, I just wanna remind everybody that it gets a lot of use by townspeople. And in essence, it's really their decision, um, we'll be bringing that in terms of the forest management plan. We're bringing in, uh, we will be, uh, holding a forum, we have to talk about one that could be. Um, and, um, inviting townspeople and, and so. I don't have a problem with the test pits, but certainly we have to be very, very careful. Yeah, yeah, that sounds right, you mentioned that, John, I mean, and on the other side of things, um, that if. If the town was supportive of that, not only from a leadership perspective, for, well, still like town perspective. Uh, citizen perspective, that, uh, it would, if we, that that could be an enormous savings on a project in order to be able to use town property as opposed to buy property, so. Uh, anyway. But, yeah.
Could be an enormous increase in cost down the line.
In turn, right?
If you had a mine that breaks and little woods, who's gonna repair your line?
Well.
They even get to it.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are the questions that we'll have to.
So, looking at the bigger picture of this. Is this system, how is it funded? Is it user funded? Or is everyone paying for it?
No, no, we probably use it.
I mean, the only reason some towns get sewer is because they are fully user funded.
Right.
Yeah, some of them are, yeah.
A lot of them are. You have to look at all of your lines, who's repairing your lines? Who's qualified to repair your lines? Are you gonna have to create a full entire position with someone qualified? To fix these lines when they fail, because they fail. A lot, and then you have angry people when the lines fail. More often than not. Then you have to look at your billing, your billing rates, interest, the amount of added costs on off the stack and doing that billing. Whether you're doing it monthly or quarterly, it's time consuming. And I know, because I do billing every three months, I deal with sewer and water every day. It's time consuming, who's gonna read all your meters? Is the town buying meters? Or individuals buying meters? If the individual is buying meters. So you gotta break somewhere, the meter's not working, he's responsible for that. How is that gonna work? How are you effectively doing the billing? If the town's paying more, then that's a huge cost. To get those meters and to get set up so that you can weave that. In the process of what you're doing, how that system is gonna put me in with the billing system you have. I mean, there's a lot of things while.
Lot of moving pieces.
Well, all of this is great on the small side. In the bigger picture, there's a lot of moving pieces. I mean, and are you gonna hire it out? So who are you gonna hire it out with? To do that, and that's costly. And when you're doing, billing, a meter reading is incorrect, so then you have to pay that person to come back out and check their reading, re-update it. I mean.
These are all good points, but. Um, these are all good points, and I think. I think you gotta give us time to put together this feasibility study and then I think you can, um. If you're not satisfied with the answers, then you can ask the question, but we, we've talked about a lot of things you've already mentioned. In our group and they'll be addressed in the feasibility study when we, when we get to that point.
Yeah, that information will be, as the. On, and on the design end, when these things are beginning to be rolled out at the sixty and ninety percent, um, done, um. Point that these are questions that will come up.
Right, and there'll, there's gonna be a, you know, a townwide, um. Discussion on this and a vote, I mean.
Right.
Um, there's a lot, we're at the beginning stages here. And, uh.
Yeah.
You think Cali brings up a, a lot of good concerns that'll be, will need to be addressed, um, as we move forward, but we need to. Kind of take steps to get there, uh, at this point, we're just trying to find where we can do test pits, um.
Right.
And, and move forward, uh, reminding us or everyone, we're still under, um, state funding with this, um. There's no money that's being just, just tossed away and, you know, the reasons, um, there are a lot of good reasons for environmentally, um. And, but there's a lot of costs associated with it that we'll have to look and will that be the balance, you know, what's, um. And then as a, as a town, we'll make a decision whether we go forward or not.
Hmm, exactly.
I know, it's probably, I've been thinking about, well, the, what, you know, resident matter choice, I'm gonna want to, be a lot of them, or get to the point that.
Yeah, that's a good question, so, you know. Oh, yeah, there's actually more than this, it's, so, or you can't let her put in, you know, systems and people are contemplating it, um. It's generally speaking, it's a voluntary process, however, and this is where I am gonna be careful about describing it in detail, because I don't know enough. Um, there are some instances when. Depending on where someone lives and what is designated as the floodway. That if a system fails. That if there is a municipal system that runs by, that, that the person is required to tap into that, um. But it's not, if someone's system, if if someone's system as far as saying that was viable. And the system is installed and the pipes run by, the person does not, is not compelled. To, now, I, and I, there may be wrinkles on that that I, you know, that I spoke on, but that's.
If someone's fails, they would probably want to look up to a system.
I would expect.
That might be a good option.
So they have the option for a hookup, they don't necessarily have to use it, they pay a fixed rate. Everyone, for in essence, having access to the hookup.
Yeah, yeah, well, but where, where this is gonna be, we're all taking the. Yeah, that's way, we're way far away from that, but, yeah, these are all legitimate.
Chris, what you got?
Specifically to the test pits and the town fourth parcel, I was just gonna, um. Point out that there are some features that we wouldn't wanna have an excavator go over up there, um, so. Some cellar holes and rock walls, I can't remember exactly what's articulated up there. But it would be, I would suppose that, like, someone from the Rec Committee and Mike from Birdside would be involved, just supplying the access to the test pits. So I generally support it, and ironically, that's one of the areas of the, the harvest, so, yeah, it might be cleared around anyway, or.
Can you send, can you send me his contact information?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Because it'll be. Yeah, okay, yeah, just let me, you know, give you the contact information on the Wednesday, okay. And, um, I'd like to make a motion. Feel comfortable having this official, so I will make a motion that we allow the more town waste water committee, uh, to have test pits. Dug on the town property, uh, border in South Hill.
Any further discussion on the motion? On paper, go now.
Fine.
Right.
Great, cool. Thanks, all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Alright, so next, uh, moving along here, we're a little bit behind, um, but we have the mountain tree, the mountain road tree. Where is the mountain road tree? Is he appearing for us? Or is this the block?
Yeah, the block. Really, yeah. So let's see, we've got, uh. Couple here, uh, from, um.
Thanks for the, uh, stat, appreciate it. Well, thanks, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so first we have, um, let's see, N- Nixon, so that's. That's, you're in there, right?
Cool.
Nixon, that's not your name?
Yeah, Kurt, uh, Ben Cur- uh, Condeson. Is that his name of the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, okay. Um, and he said, I only need to cut brush. Uh, the tree rather, and not deal with any of the wood or brush, fifteen hundred dollars. And, uh, if we have to remove the brush, then it's nineteen fifty. And. Snapping sure it works. Holy smokes, uh, his is three thousand. And he says, uh. Tree is to be safely dropped via aerial lift, climbing and rigging, all brush to be chipped and removed, so and so for itself. You know, the, the wood is gonna be taken by, um.
Highmark.
Highmark. Jarred Martin, yes, yes, uh, Guy Martin. Yeah.
The buyer would be ready.
Yes, so.
It's a pine, right?
Yes, yeah, so he's all. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't. Size three thousand, and then three words. Is even worth it, fifty-four hundred.
Yeah, right, go with fifteen hundred, um. And just leave the brush.
Yeah, yes.
So it sounded good for everybody.
Yeah, I think that's what we originally proposed, basically drop the tree and, yeah, move the, move whatever's there, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause Roger, the other guy's gonna take them.
Right, he can do what he wants with it.
Yeah.
On his property.
Yeah. I mean, I could go as high as the nineteen fifty, we'll get rid of the brush, but if we just leave it there, let's just leave it.
Yeah, a little biodegrade, it's good for them.
That video, so it's good, too, is that the guy?
Oh, he's really good, he's really wants to be in my house, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a nice guy over there.
Yeah, that anymore does, so I'm gonna make, I'll make the motion.
I just made one.
Second, looking.
Oh, uh, any further discussion of it? All in favor?
Fine.
Hi, alright.
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, very good, um. Alright, so there's no one else on line, I just wanna make sure there's anyone. Having comments, we have reports communications, Sasha. Little mess.
No, there's not one today, that's a real.
Well, yeah. What's that?
Kind of one communication.
I tried calling her, I haven't been, that's too bad. Yeah. But anyways, go ahead. So she started a new coffee business, I don't know if you guys knew that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when she was hired, she always, that's what she said, she was, she roast coffee, that's why her, her license plate says roast, if you're wondering what that meant. Not just that she was getting roasted, uh. Right. She, and a couple of weeks ago, she started, uh, her, her open to coffee business, which is located at the junction of seventeen and one hundred. So, um, so literally, uh, movable building type thing.
Yeah.
Right, right across from the, uh, the old mountain, mountain tavern.
No, no, I know your timeline, yeah.
Where the, where he used to be, where there's a cannabis shop there.
Yes.
In that.
That's a great spot, coffee, coffee and cannabis, maybe along with that.
Good morning, we, we, we're morning in the team, so she's.
She's there in a little mobile.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like one of those food truck kind of things.
Yeah, it's a little trailer type thing. So, uh.
She started doing it already?
I said last, two weeks ago.
So.
I think she's there Wednesday through Saturday or Wednesday through the weekend.
Yeah.
And, um, so. I would say that's why we're losing her, and she's been a great, um, asset for the town. Um, and has really helped get our zoning back up and unfortunately, she spent the last year really. Kind of repairing what had been gone wrong a year and a half or two before, um. So, uh, we will work with the, uh, uh, the planning commission, uh. To real, to try to find someone else, but I've got a call interview, let's, let's see where her head's at, uh, maybe she'll have some time, I don't know, but.
Alright, so. We won't accept the resignation.
Not tonight, let's.
So would that be something where we'll have to maybe get back to, with central law regional planning and get the temporary?
That's an idea.
I mean, yeah. Get, um. What was her name, what was her?
Why would I say red?
She said she's willing to help the fire restraint.
Right, yeah. And I think she should work with us, but. Right. Alright, Sasha, what's next? Alright, we can sign those. All right, we can sign those.
One with the ball traps and the other two were just kind of moving things back and forth to different properties. They're next to each other.
We will sign off on this.
At the school and all you. No changes on that. Formally signed and sent over to the school board. At last meeting, I need a regular agreement. I needed the wrong one showing you. All Woods turn on the DRB is up and she would love to continue and reappoint.
Um, so moved on that, is there a second? Kelly seconds it, um. The vote is for, um. Paula Woods, pardon me, Paula Woods for the, uh, DRB. All in favor of reappointments? Vote I. No, but you know what, um. What, next meeting I'll have a recommendation for that. They're the ones that I think we all remember in March, um. It's so funny, you know, I had never heard of them thing about freewheeling and then they must have done on this PR blitz where. Every week there's been, or not recently, but the, for consecutive weeks, there was a lot of stuff in the Valley Reporter. About them and reading about them, they really do. Um, do a good job and seem to really, um, support the community. So I think it's something we should. Um, consider, but let me come up with a figure based on what they asked, what we have for monies, um. Because they did go about it the right way. They actually brought us in, um, a petition. Um, that we did not, uh, put on the ballot, but. I do think it's something we should discuss again. So we'll do that next time Sasha. Robin, what do you have for us?
Uh, Stefan asked me about the ACO, if we can begin moving that forward. I didn't know what that process was. Is that going to be a public hearing next or something like that? In more control ordinance?
Yeah, I.
We've kind of agreed on all the wordage and everything, but I don't know where it goes from there. He asked me about it and I was like, I don't know what the next step is, so. Leading on, you guys are telling me what's the next step.
You know, I think, um, very good question whether that is something that we as a group just vote on or whether we need to. Have town wide, uh, approval where we do something on like town meeting or something. So we will get back with you on that next meeting.
Okay, good. Uh, the only other thing I had is the lady who came in, uh, last week on the trash. From Taylor Street. Had somehow been bypassed and no one has removed to the trash. So we reached out to me today. I don't even want to ask Martin and the guys to bring a loader over there. I don't know what to tell.
You know how much is there?
There is a good amount. She said there wasn't, she didn't have the ability to put it into the dumpster barrels. Uh, she thought that the dumpster is full to begin with, but it's all like soaked in water long. So it's not a huge amount. But it's enough where, and I think we're either going to need an excavator or maybe pick it up. And dump it in with something, the back of a dump truck or bring it to landfill or. Yeah.
Because I'm pretty sure from what I've heard, if you have a dumpster to get reimbursed, you. Have to have someone watching what's going in it.
Yeah.
Well, they said all those, those regs on that, yeah.
I'm just not sure what direction to go in. I mean, I can't physically do it myself, so I didn't know. Uh, I mentioned it to Sasha, he said with something we'd have to tell Martin to, to go and deal with it, so.
I just wish I knew when it was stuff that, you know, they throw in the back of the truck and then we can throw in the back of the, or throw in our dumpster here.
I can go back and get some photos. It was like a bunch of old couches and stuff that are all water soaked. It doesn't appear to be like, you know, massive. But she was right at the top of terrace by the roadway.
Yeah.
So I was a little questionable about how much damage she could have actually had that high up on the road in that particular location, but. Pretty far up from the river and nobody else down there. But we already made a commitment and kind of said we're going to do something about it. So right now I'm, I'm the one that's stuck in between the rock and the earth places.
We'll go up to you and look at it.
I'll take a look at it. I'll send some photos. I'll fill them up in an email and maybe we can go from there. Yeah, 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 yeah. So. I, I, I mean, I think we.
So how's it all get wet if it wasn't flooding? I mean, I, I would get it.
I think it was coming into our.
Into our house, coming into our basement. The runoff was just flowing into our, I think that, but yeah, so. And I looked at the stuff, it was pretty, it wasn't, it was in pretty bad shape when I looked at it and it's been up there for a couple of weeks now, so.
And even trying to renew the cleaning services because that can be considered. Personal property from FEMA, so FEMA reimburses the homeowner for personal property. Does part of that cover?
All I know is she's not here. She asked for help and we told her that we do something.
We'll check it out and then just ask her though, she's getting.
Say we talked about it. Have some photos.
Yeah.
Important with these on, you know, we might be like. I might have pizza or some.
That would probably be a good question for Tim Baker. So how actually Matt and Baker is dealing with.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get what I can for information on what she's got and, uh. So the other dumpsters we filled helping people because we didn't do the FEMA, then we will get reimbursed or something. We're supposed to get reimbursed. Yeah, we're totally, we're moving, it's have to be reimbursable, so.
We got told three times that they were going to pick up trash on secret drive too, and it's not. So it's FEMA is there, you're taking the chance to that, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So that was my only comment. I know it's two things.
All right, so you'll work that. Kelly, what do you have? Not, not a shalala. Don, big D?
Well, yeah, is this where I, should I talk about the town hall?
We can do old business town. We can do, yeah, old business, whatever it is here, let's just.
Well, just a quick update is, you know, I can't, I can't even see what time it is until it, it's one, it's eight thirty right now. So I'll try to be brief. So we're, we're moving into the, um. Design documents, you know, that's what we, you know, we. That's our next step. I mean, you approve with some funds of twenty five. Twenty two, five, twenty five or something, I guess. To do design development, um. They're going to want to be sending us what, what's typically would be an AIA form, you know, an architect, you know, with agreement where they've all, they've got us. You know, he sends it an email telling you we're doing the next phase in their proposal and bringing them tonight. But a couple of things just to keep on the radar. Is that I think we, we're separate from this, they didn't include, is that we're going to need to do a survey. Or at least a topographical, not a full blown heavy duty survey, but a topographical. So that, because based on some of the design and work that we're going to do, we, you know, renovations to help. Mitigate the water and stuff going in and the handicap access and stuff. We'll need to, like I said, do a topographical survey that could run, run about between fifteen and two thousand dollars. I have two local firms that are, I emailed to see if they had any availability. And they do, and I haven't sent, they're sending the drawing. For them to price up and I'll come back to you guys, but if I want to let everybody know that. That's something. Renovations might go outside of the town property or? Oh, no, 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 just to get it so it's accurate to. I, I don't want me, you're walking through the design, but in some of the, the rear door, the side entrance door, there's. There's huge amount of water that flows there in that, in the design, it's. Changing the entrance around back and the handicap accessibility and it can't be off, they, you know, they've got. Yeah. And then, um, I'd like to just get. Just a nod of approval. For, I'd like to send out an RFP. That I, it's not quite written yet, so I've got to, you know, kind of show it to everybody or email it to everybody. And this would be to, um, possibly look into. A construction manager approach for the project rather than. The other way we would get the hard, uh, design document drawings. And then we would send out. You know, drawings to contractors to get, you know, firm pricing, you know, a GC to price a whole job. Or a construction manager. You know, we'll get too into the weeds right now describing what their role is, but their role is that they would come in on, into the job sooner. Do the cost, with the construction document way that I did, we'd have to. Get some estimates, pay for an estimate. Two times along this process, which could run somewhere between three and. Five thousand dollars to get two construction estimates and then go that way, which we might do, just. Finish the hard drawings, plans and specs, run track documents. And then it goes out to bid, or you can do a construction manager. That joins the process early on. So that they help not only in working on some of the design, design processing, what changes could be taking place, you know? So you, you have to pay a little, you pay, instead of paying for a hard construction estimate, you'd have a construction manager. Who can manage that. Well, you know, who just, then, then he brings in subcontractors and gets three pricings for all the subcontractors. And then they have more invested interest than just getting. They work through the whole design development. And then the CDs, which is the contract documents, plans and specs. And then I can read, I have a whole list to explain it to you how it will all work, but I. Won't get into the weeds of that right now, but what I'd like to ask is that. We have no commitment to this, but to go ahead and do an RFP and send it out to a few firms and get a proposal for this. This route. Then we can decide further down, you know, a little bit down the road. Meanwhile, the design documents will continue on. But we bring either a construction manager onboard. Or we would go the other route and just finish the construction documents and do our hard bit. So. At this point, it won't. It'll be just my working with Peter, getting an RFP out and. Getting, you know, sending it to you guys and then we have to send it out from like we did the last time. So I wanted to see if that would be all right with anybody.
If this, nothing that we're obligated to, um. It would give us a better perspective once you get it back and what that. Person would do and, and where in the process and then we can make a decision on. If we're moving, you know, which way we. Uh, I guess I don't have any problem with it. Is everyone else, what's everyone else's thoughts?
The next thing, just a quickie is that, um. If the town hall. The library, town hall. Can share the town's Zoom account instead of getting a separate, that was, that account's about to run out. Instead of buying another one, it's not like they use it all that much. You know, just use the town.
Yeah, we have, this one, there's, there's three or four people that they use it. You said, and use it, I think ours comes under my name, but anyone can use.
Then, um. A week or two ago, I got a text from Karen Board who was here, I think it was, she was at a planning board meeting. I think she's on the planning board, right?
Yep.
And she was wondering, I guess the meeting was here in the late afternoon. And she was sending me like, do you know whatever happened to the shades discussion? About getting shades, because I guess the sun was blaring in here. It's, no one could see the screen or something or whatever, so. I went to her, oh, okay, I'll, I'll remind everybody. And I know that was something that we're maybe going to.
Yeah, hey, we should, Sasha, is that something we can price out, we can put into? The budget this year. We've talked about it several times and then.
Yeah.
We've all had issues with it, I know in the summer, I do. Yeah.
So, okay, so.
To do something.
Just to let you know, the sculpting site is going on. For the Gallagher's sidewalk. I talked to Clark, who booked me the day, uh. Westerman, because he's talked to the guy in Waterbury just about the gaps.
Yeah.
The wastewater system being connected to the. Community over there. And obviously, we got to know about what, what that's all about because. Can't go put a sidewalk in and then come along later and take it up. Uh, that's one of the things that are, that are on there. And, uh.
You there, Don? Well, good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
The only thing I have is, um, I did get an email from Blodgett. For an update, looking for an update, so. I will email back tomorrow.
Tell them we'll get it done next spring.
Oh, the block tree, oh, okay. I always think it blocked its trucking somehow. I was like, no, no, no.
The old Blodgett tree. All right, well, good. I'm glad, so you'll be able to get them. Uh, satisfied, um. I don't have nothing new to add, but I will, uh. Look to get the, uh, minutes for July seventeenth approved. Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second on that?
No second.
Do you second that? All in favor, go right. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, it's old business. I think we've hit a lot of, or had enough that we don't need to hit, uh, probably anything else here tonight.
Pits and material. And I know the location that one of the big outfits probably is not wanting anymore, but. That's something.
What place is that? Oh, you mean rivers, uh. Yeah, that was just rock quarry, but it wasn't really gravel, but yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, I think there is be too much, um. Sorry, too many, too much litigation. I mean, I don't think you could ever back. Back that out or what, what's going on there, um. Yeah, I don't know.
Wait, I, I misunderstood the sand pit here they're talking about.
But if there are other. Area isn't found, maybe something there.
Is there any, John, when you go around, was there any other places in town in the past that? People have big gravel. Loads, you know, a little. Oh, yeah, dredging the rivers. I mean, that's. Oh, yeah, dredging the rivers, I mean, that's.
That was what they used to do.
Yeah, Carl Wondell, that's that's there, yeah. Um that and. Then then. The site on more John Mountain.
Is that that's not feels?
No, that's actually um. I just know her first name, Loretta. Um. What's, what's, what's that?
It's Steve Ward and Red Key.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I mean, everyone keep your eye, your ears open, people here.
Oh, is that right?
I think all towns are kind of in the scramble, I mean, based on the barren, this was the barren that closed, right, or just about closed. Um. So, yes. Uh. And the free wheel is down there, like I said, we'll hit that um. This is really nothing else there that we can pull down with, is there anything new, if anyone's?
Well, what what's uh is um, well, you're gonna need one of the um. Judges at Wolfberries this year for cakes and stuff.
Or whatever they have, yeah, and I think they're. I think everyone's needs to put that on there.
I already told Michelle what she was asking.
Yeah, well, uh.
I know John's up for it, he did the best, he was eating those cakes like.
John would sample everything and want more. Yeah, maybe it's uh. Newy Taker.
I know.
Plus, an employee, you have to be chuffed as to. Alright, so we do have a lot to sign, um this is the errors of the mission statement that was there. Um. John came in and signed the the payroll for us, but sign the one that's underneath. Of this first sheet. Yeah, yeah. Not. Oh, press. Whoops, excuse me. Your brother Shane. What happened with the what?
With the guy who came in and was breaking the, having his rope and so. All hard work too. We heard anything more about that, he was gonna go back to the planning board. But then he came, oh, yeah, and stayed in R and P, everybody's applying for the town balls, yeah, for roll facility.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um. I uh spoke to Ron like I had. Mentioned to them that night that we would, and that was the last I've heard of, I don't know where it's gone.
I was supposed to go, maybe you go back to the planning.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, no.
Yes, I would. Nothing heard, I was good, sorry. I hope not. That has got some um invoice in here for um. Lennings.
Yeah.
And for the guys, how is that going um?
Good, they've all used all their.
They have, they've got their stuff. I haven't seen anything to sign, but you can just, that's you can just look at that.
No, they've done, they've been great. I think it's actually been.
I think that was much better than I used, well, I think that they used to get. That stuff, they they look like prison people to me.
Pants are bad, they wouldn't fix them the first time. So there was times that I would have to rip the pants from my cross to me or need to buy.
You take a look at that, yeah, I am sure, I I know. Sometimes I look at it and I like. I'm not as pleased that we were able to. Get them into some clothing that looks like I use. Yeah, exactly. Sign that, please. I just can't do some. This goes on top of the pack, that's just, that was something I missed last week. Alright, I'd move to a journal. All favor or I? Alright, thank you.